You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting.
Before we get into the minutes, I'll ask Beverly to call the roll and read our agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief Jivo?
I am here.
Brian Rogers?
Here.
Bill Hutwoker?
Here.
You don't look like that. Anne Karazinski?
Here.
Lisa Thorne?
Yeah.
Eric Calio? He's not here. Wayne Lechleider? Not here. James Ward?
Here.
Adam Mulhern? He's not here. The agenda for the zoning board adjustment of Swansea, meeting of May 15th, 2023 is as follows. The board will review the minutes for April 17th, 2023 for approval. There will be a regional impact vote, followed by public hearings. ZBA number 23-007 variance application, Erica Davis requests a variance pursuant to section five, article C1 of the zoning ordinance to operate a Chalk Hill facility at 2 South Winchester Street, tax map 72, lot 31 in the Village Business 2 district. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. ZBA number 23-008.
May I interrupt you for a second? Withdrawn permanently or just withdrawn for the month?
Permanently.
Thank you.
Permanently. ZBA number 23-008 special exception application, John Dunn requests a special exception pursuant to section four, article A2M to construct an accessory structure with a footprint exceeding 1,000 square feet at 39 Pebble Hill Road, tax map 61, lot 8-2 in the Rural Agricultural District. ZBA number 23-009 special exception and variance application, Barclay Enterprises LLC on behalf of SET Property Holdings LLC requests a variance from section five, article B1, and a special exception from section five, article B2 of the zoning ordinance to construct an open bay vehicle wash facility with accessory electric vehicle charging stations located at the property of 93 Monadnock Highway. The subject property is shown at tax map 18, lot 134 in the Business District. The applicant has requested that their application be heard at the regular meeting of the ZBA on June 19th, 2023. Other business, ex parte communications, and any other business that may arise.
Thank you, Beverly.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, so you're not going to be talking about that last thing, right?
Correct.
I'll be back.
Enjoy the evening.
Okay.
No charge.
I wouldn't have been so quick.
That's what we try, we strive for that.
Go have more.
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
We didn't know either.
Right.
We didn't know until we got it.
Yes, I know.
Before we move forward, I will see James Ward for Bill Hutwoker. And we do have some minutes that were shared with us from our April 17th meeting, and we do have a forum for those. Myself, I was here, and James was here. Entertain a motion on those minutes.
The moment we approved the minutes from the previous meeting, you had the 17th meeting.
Thank you, James. Do you have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Anne. It's been moved and seconded to accept the meetings as presented. Any question on the motion?
I'm staying.
That's right. So all those in favor, please, of accepting the minute, accepting the motion as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries? Seeing as we only have one, we will, we'll make a determination of regional impact right now, but we really only have to look at B, which is the special exception application 23-008.
Make a motion, there's no regional impact.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Moved and seconded, that the one hearing we're going to have tonight does not rise to the level of having regional impact. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Public hearing. Special exception application, John Dunn requests a special act, special exception pursuant to section four, article A2M to construction, to construct an accessory structure with a footprint exceeding 1,000 square feet at 39 Pebble Hill Road, tax map 61, lot 8.2 in the Rural Ag District. Again, I'll be seating, you see James for Bill on this case. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What do you want to do?
I want to build a garage.
Okay.
Store my cars.
Okay.
I need it a little wider so I can get in, open doors, park three cars.
Okay. Did we have any response from the department heads or anything else to add?
The proposed structure was all set back. It's supposed to be 1,200 square feet instead of the 1,000, which would be approved by right.
Okay. So it's set back quite a bit from your, from your, the road.
Five home, two acres.
Thank you. I could have found it in here, but I knew you'd know that.
I don't, probably on the side of that.
Five home. Five home, two.
I'll give you a little background on why this is even here as an ordinance. We've had issues, and I like to say this because you have the right use that we like to see for these. What these had become after, at times when we were approving these, some number of years ago, because we were more diligent on these, is they, they became kind of pseudo businesses. You can understand the easy way to morph into that, you know, just have a few guys come around on the weekends, and then you start selling parts, or, you know, and it's very easy. And that is beyond what we're, obviously.
Yeah, I don't intend to do that at all.
Yeah, it's, it's, and we've had that, and then after approving them, of course, people come back to us and say, why'd you approve that? It's the guys running up this stuff. So we like to explain the reasoning behind why you're here tonight is to, is to make sure you understand that that's part, that's not, that's not what we're allowing, you know, we're allowing, if we, if we're, this is successful, it's for what you propose to use it for, no, nothing else.
Are you going to have to build a drive, the driveway that's shown here?
Driveway's there.
Instead? Okay, so what's, is there anything at the site right now?
No.
Okay. Other questions? Anne?
So this envisioning what you're, what you're doing, is that going to be enough to accomplish what you need?
Yes.
You want to buy new cars? I'm trying to property. You are? Well, that's good. I like here.
Yeah, I have like six cars. I can put six cars in that area.
Yeah. Are you going to run electric out there or just?
Eventually, but not right now.
Yeah.
Just for lights.
Yeah. Are you for a pad to do?
Yes.
Oh, you are.
It's going to have a frost wall, and it's going to be cold.
So it sounds like it's going to be what we had last time, because it's on the floor as.
No heating system?
No.
No. Other questions?
I just need a place to store my cars. I have to.
I'm sort of beholden, you know, beholden to saying this is a public hearing, although we have no members of the public here, but it is a public hearing because we are on line, I believe. And, so the public, you know, at this point, we have an open public hearing, although I didn't say that, well, public hearing was open. Anything else to add on this yourselves? I know it's pretty straightforward.
Not really.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything, Lisa?
I drove up to that property this weekend.
Good.
And it looks like, I don't know if you'll even see it from the road.
No. Well, you'll see it once it's built.
Once it's built, okay. No, it's nice, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't intend to run a business out of there.
I know, I'm 70 years old, I'm not going in the business. I'm done.
I hear you.
I'm playing now, so.
Anne?
I'm right behind you.
You good?
It's not everybody.
Yeah.
Anything else, Brian?
No, sir.
James? Lisa? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And what we're going to do, we're going to go to the questions that we have for a special exception, and, which is starting on page two or four on the application here. And the first question that we have to take up is, is the proposed use similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district, and is it in an appropriate location for such a use? Oh, that's Brian.
It's an appropriate location. I don't know if there are similar ones on Pebble Hill Road, because I've not been up there in a Coon's age.
But the district itself.
But yes, an appropriate one, so.
In this district, in the larger district?
Yeah.
Sure. All right. Anne?
So, yes, and in this, in the larger district, I've seen plenty of these. It sounds appropriate.
Thank you. James?
Same. I'm, the proposed use is similar, but I don't know precisely of other things this size, but I don't see an issue there, and it's appropriate location for sure.
Yeah. Lisa?
I drove by the property, and it looks like it's a good location.
For this kind of use.
Yeah, it's great.
I'm not trying to shoehorn it on that property, obviously. It's got some room and.
It's got, on your.
All right. I agree. All right, thank you. Do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Anne?
Yes, it would not reduce the value of any property in the district.
And it wouldn't be, for second.
It wouldn't be obnoxious, there's not anything, they've already said they're going to make it look like a house, so it's good. One then.
Okay. Lisa?
It will not be obnoxious.
Okay. Good. Jake?
I don't see any evidence that would indicate that it wouldn't be appropriate, and it would certainly not reduce the value of any property.
There's no evidence to that effect. Brian?
Yeah, there's, there's no evidence and no testimony provided to the contrary, so yes.
All right. Do we agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians if this was approved? Jake?
I can't imagine there would be.
Anne?
Yes, there would be no nuisance or hazard based on what we're getting described.
But we're approving. Okay, Brian?
Yeah, no evidence that there is.
Thank you. Lisa? Last question. Do we feel that there are adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Well, I'd say yes, because the whole point building is to protect the cars and general the action is to that.
Okay.
The description of the building seems, seems to be adequate and appropriate for the use that's being proposed.
Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you, I agree. Given the answers granted, now the answers provided to the special exception questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept the application, ZBA 23-008 as written.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. It's been moved and seconded to prove the variance, I mean, excuse me, the special exception for a structure exceeding 1,000 square feet at 39 Pebble Hill Road. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Get it built. Get those cars under cover.
I'm welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
One of these days it's going to rain, so.
What's that?
It's going to rain one of these days, so.
We're due for some.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for following through. We have a nice short evening apparently, because our other two are either withdrawn or asked to postpone, but I would like us to talk, for Lisa's sake, a little bit about this idea of ex parte communications. If you could think about us as collectively as a judge, as kind of a judge, right? We're looking at the law, a law, which is our ordinance, and we're looking as whether we can bend or necessarily break that law. We're sort of, we're here to have relief, because, you know, a zoning law is rarely perfect, so that it always fits every one situation. So I think it's, it's important for us to understand that because of the nature of what we do, you know, you don't have judges walking around town, talking to people about cases that are open, right? We're not quite so dramatic, but at the same time, we have a legal responsibility to, to sort of leave everything here at the table if, if something isn't finished up, and not have discussions about it, you know, at the transfer station on Saturdays, or at Market Basket, or other places that Anne and I tend to run into one another. You just kind of, you can talk to one, you know, you don't have to kind of walk by him without saying anything, but it's really important because it can, it legally, it can, it can compromise the case if two of the judges making, or more, in charge of making that discussion are having discussions outside. Because in essence, we all should hear the same questions and answers as everyone hears. It becomes particularly issues if we're doing a site visit, because people are kind of all over the place oftentimes, when I gather around a table, with, you know, with it being all perfectly recorded, and having someone as wonderful, Beverly here catching every mistake I make, and appreciate that. But at the same time, you don't want, you know, you don't, it is a little more difficult under those circumstances, but it's important, no matter what, if we had left this particular application on the table because we needed more information, or the applicant wanted to come back with something else, we really are, we have to, during that time, we, we keep it to ourselves until we reconvene again.
Am I right that because certain decisions could be appealed within 30 days, that extends to 30 days after a decision?
That's right. 30 days, including today. You know, if we had denied these folks, the Duns, this, they would have 30 days to appeal that decision. And, but you're right, so it, it goes beyond this evening even, because I guess, in this case, somebody could come back, a neighbor of the Duns could come back and say, wait a minute. Any, any party could come back and appeal it within that 30 days. Appreciate that, Jim, that's, that's true. So it's while the case is open and for a month or so thereafter.
Okay.
And again, we've, it's still the minority of the cases that you have any issues with, I mean, usually good, or, you know, whether you approve or not, but it's those ones that get, that you do, if someone does challenge that decision you made, and we've had a few of those, that, you know, everything you've done and said is under scrutiny as, as a board member. And so sometimes we, we want to make sure we understand that, and we've been, we've, you know, Brian had to take us through a whole bunch of really difficult public hearings and so forth, and some housing developments that we went through, and that because, because I couldn't sit for those, given, given some circumstances, so. And those were, you know, those were scrutinized, those went all the way up to the Supreme Board, and every, every word that's said was scrutinized in some fashion or another, so. It doesn't usually come into play, but when it does, it's, it becomes very important. So, you know, we did, we just, and I think we do a pretty good job with this, I mean, in terms of the whole idea of ex parte. I'm really, I think, I think we all respect it, and at least I feel we've all respected it enough, you know.
The hardest part is, is if something goes for more than one meeting, and a member of the community comes up to you and says, hey, what about such and such? You just have to.
No, you really do, you know, with all due respect and, and so forth, I'm just, you could even say that, we're, we're bound, like a judge, to not discuss a case until it's finished.
Yeah, I suggest also, in a situation like that, you can refer someone to the minutes, because that's the legal.
That's the.
Documentation of what's happened.
And or Sarah.
Or Sarah. Someone, but, but we can't, we can't put our own interpretation or spin on what's, what's there.
It's really important.
And then the other, other question that I had at one point was simply, the other day, another member of the zoning commission and I had a general discussion about zoning in general, and that's not the particular case, and that's certainly appropriate outside.
Sure. Sure.
It doesn't hurt to educate the public either, you know, if they're trying to talk to you about Joe Blow's case, and we've, you know, we've pushed it to next month, and next month, and now it's in court, whatever the situation is, what I tell people is, by law, we're not allowed to talk about a case until it's been closed for 30 days, and then they go, oh, I didn't know that, or whatever.
Even if they ever want to discuss it one month, well, you can read it.
Yeah, back to the minutes again.
Because it just makes it easier, and I'd rather critique what's in your cart.
That's, that's right. Much better to talk about what's in my cart than in one of these cases.
Right. Of course, now we have video recordings too, which means that people can actually see for themselves what people's body language was when they said some, so.
That's a little trickier than you think, you know, in some instances, you know, most of the time, what we saw tonight is, you know, it often, very often happens, you know.
And not to be overly specific, but one of these is going to be interesting, because, you know, anything new.
Yes.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
I think about the city of King, when you put in their dialysis facility that's right next to the, and people have had to, if they need help after it got put in, it's hard for the ambulances to get in there.
No.
When it's busy, so. I'm glad we're not worried about health facilities like that, it's like, whoa, you know, because I've been there, and tried to get in, because there's so much going on with the businesses that are nearby, they, you know.
Critically.
Another issue I have, and I just want to get some guidance from the rest of you on is that I see a lot of these proposals on the Conservation Commission, and so we discuss it there, at the Conservation Commission, and I shouldn't be talking about what we discussed there, because that gets communicated through Sarah to you folks, and it's hard for me sometimes not to, not to feel the issue is already open and so on, or know something about what's coming to this board and that. It's very difficult for me to, because I have to go longer, keep my mouth shut longer, so it's very, very difficult.
But I don't think the commission is a sanctioned judicial body.
It isn't, and it doesn't make decisions, it makes recommendations.
Right, so you're allowed to talk about what goes on there, because there is no ex parte communication regulation that covers the commission.
But it affects my approach to the case here, in a sense that I, I come, you know, this is where I'm a little bit at odds here. I have had a discussion with the Conservation Commission, so I come to this meeting with some background information and some advice from colleagues and so on, that gives me a little more, I thought about it a little bit more, or considered some areas that maybe you folks haven't, until you see the report from Sarah about what, what, what our recommendation is, the commission is. So I'm just wondering how, how much of that I can share with other people in the community, because it, in a sense, it might show that I'm prejudged on certain issues, or prejudiced or toward a certain point of view before I come to a meeting like this. And so I'm a little worried about opening up there, and yet I, on the other hand, if I know that certain things are coming before this board, and there's a person I know who's interested in this, what I learn at the Conservation Commission isn't something that relates to proceedings here, so I might share with them and say, hey, you know, this is going to be in front of the zoning board.
That's the best thing.
Yes, so I think that it's just about managing, you're asking for opinions, and so I'll just give you mine, it's his, it's his board, but I think it's a matter of managing expectations, so they're not sanctioned boards, the commissions aren't, so you can talk about it freely, whatever to anybody, but as far as bringing that, a label of baggage of information to a sanctioned board, like planning, or selectment, or zoning, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, because we're all bringing different community baggage in our brains.
Kind of the way I felt, I just want to be open about.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I do is if somebody starts talking to me about it, like the ambulance thing, that's not a sanctioned commission, I'll freely talk about it, but I have, you know, almost 30 years' experience in that field, so if somebody's going to talk to me out in the street about it, I'm going to bend their ear.
Right.
But I'm very careful to manage the expectation that if I know something's coming in front of this board to say, I'm going to reserve my opinions until I hear the case and facts, you know, of testimony brought to us, other than that.
Right. Okay, that's basically what I'm doing.
After the public sessions are closed, you can bring your experience to the rest of the board.
Right.
As any of us, you know, engineering background, or whatever background, people can explain things to us that we might not have, you know, knowledge of.
My understanding is that we, we can use our own personal experience, our personal viewpoints, as long as we give reasons for our feelings and our judgments.
Here.
I appreciate that. I would just be careful at Conservation Commission that when pending ZBA applications are discussed, you don't participate in sharing opinions.
Yeah. Share facts.
You share facts.
That's what I'm worried about a little bit.
You know, this is 40 feet from the wetlands, that's a fact, how I feel about those 40 feet is different.
Okay. Thank you for that, because that's, that's one of the things I'm worried about, you know, how do I manage that? Because I'm going to have to come here and deal with those things, and of course, I feel like I can be open like that until this meeting starts, but once this meeting starts, I am bound to keep whatever happens here secret. But Sarah makes a good point, I need to not speak as a member of the zoning board at the Conservation Commission.
Unless.
No, you speak as a taxpayer.
As a taxpayer.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with that. I think the distinction that, that I'm extrapolating from what you said, which is how I conduct, I'm a little more jovial than other people, because I think that, I think that taxpayers that come in front of the zoning board, they're already nervous, they've already worked up, they've already expended money, and the only two things they know in life, and you can ask anybody, is the zoning board is impeding their ability to do what they want with property they own that the Town of Swansea does not own, so Big Brother's trying to compel them what they kind of can't do, and they have to spend money and come here and be told no, because all they've ever heard is the bad stuff, all they ever do is say no. They don't really hear about all the 99 of them that we say yes to.
Yes, too, yeah. It's that one.
So all opinions have to be kept out of here, this is purely, it's, it's a trial. If it's not fact and proven, it's out.
Right. And James, if you're, I think if, if you're feeling particularly passionate or about a, about a, something that's coming in front of the Conservation Commission, you could always recuse yourself on this board, if you really feel you want to get something across that may, may certainly shade your judgment, or someone.
Right. If I want to. But I think if you have that passion, feel free that, you know, to, to, don't, don't
hold back what you need to do as a, you know, as a, as the proverbial human being in the room, that just because, just because you're sitting on this zoning board, you know, so I don't think, because there may be times you really want to advocate in a certain way, and you shouldn't feel you can do that, we can, we'll work that, the rest of it out here, because that can happen.
I mean, these are, these are, I just wanted to have those discussions, because I think it's important to have them out in front of everybody.
Better to have it that way than having it hold, and, and there are conflicts, inherent conflicts between what we're trying to do here, this is a sort of pretty unique board here, in terms of what our responsibilities are, and, and, you know, most of the times you can be on the Conservation Commission and the, and the Economic Development, you know, committee, and, you know, it doesn't matter what you're assigning to each of those, you're not making any decisions on, on law. That's really, you know, without, I guess, sounding overly dramatic, that's what we're doing, the ordinance is law, and we're, we're, we're basically allowing some, some relief to that law. And so it is, it is a, it is a judicial, it's a quasi judicial decision or process. Just want us to respect that as much as we can, because if you don't, that's where you get in trouble, and the next step.
Well, we certainly, certainly have learned that, that any kind of answers to questions and so on have to be based on factual findings, and therefore there need to be, it's not emotion, it's not how you feel about something, it's what you actually see, and how that relates to the statute, so that's, that's what we do.
Yeah, I think overall, I'm pretty proud of the board and how it, how it does comport itself, and, and how we're able to facilitate things in the town.
I think we've done a good job over the years, and there's been some really heated cases that we've had to temper down, and actually, when you engage with the people, as he's done many times over the years, we can only judge on this, we can't judge on that, we don't, we understand, you may not like that Lisa's putting in a, you know, two Olympic-sized pools in her horse and stamp yard, but there's nothing we can do about it, but all size you count. When you explain it to people, when they're still grumpy, but at least they're understanding, I think we've done a good job with that.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, and it's not, not my place to do that, but exactly, I think that people often do not understand that you are working with very specific criteria.
Yeah.
And I think educate, somebody said educate, if you talk about the criteria, you can actually state, this is the criteria we're going to be using, you can look it up, give them the RSA, or whatever, you know, if you're talking to someone, you can't be, and you can explain, you can't be judging about how you feel about it.
What a popularity contest of the applicant.
And you refer back to that criteria, because I don't think a lot of people understand that.
I agree.
They need to understand what that criteria, and that's only the thing that you guys can judge on, right? Just those things.
And I think the cases that I've chaired, I think I've gone to painstaking lengths to make sure that people understand, this is all we can judge, you can give us 35,000 reams of paper telling us all the good, bad, and the ugly, but if it's not one of these four questions, I don't care.
If it doesn't fit in there somewhere.
Is there a reference, RSA reference that these guys can keep in their heads to refer to those criteria, I can't remember what it is.
I can't remember what it is, but I can, I can email it.
Look it up, yeah.
You know, these, these questions are state mandated questions, that we...
Oh, yeah, that have been, that have been...
Completely out of our...
Right, that's why you should refer to them. Get yourself off the hook.
That's right, yeah.
Well, thank you, folks.
Cool, thank you all, anything else to come before us?
I, I have a little bit of other business.
Sure.
Jeez.
I just kind of want to put the feelers out, for if you guys would be receptive to changing the schedule for your regular meetings. That's why I'm just putting the feelers out, I didn't type up a memo, putting out the feelers. I'm proposing the third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM, but obviously, if a majority of the board is never able to attend that, then I'm not gonna write up a memo, so.
So what's the reason for that?
Um, really, to accommodate me, no, to accommodate staff, it's challenging managing ZBA and planning board, because they're not on the same night, so it would make the scheduling of everything that we do a lot simpler if they fell on the same night, well, it wouldn't be the same night, but it would mean all of our deadlines would line up every week of the month, the meetings would line up every week of the month.
Monday holidays.
Yeah, and Monday holidays wouldn't get messed up.
Planning board is second and fourth Thursday?
Yep.
Okay, so, so this means that instead of being zoning before the first meeting, we have zoning for the second meeting for the planning board?
Currently, you have zoning before the second meeting of the planning board, because you're the third Monday of the month, so I just want to shift you to the third Thursday.
Oh, so it's the same week, but on Thursday instead of, okay.
Yeah.
This gives a little more time for you to...
It just makes things work out a little bit.
And at 6:00 PM, not 7:00?
At 6:00 PM, if that works for everybody, and so, again, we would have to amend the board procedures, so it's not something that I can pitch tonight, and then we'll do it.
And we would probably have to vote on it?
Yeah, you'd have to vote on it, and I'd have to notice that and everything, but I just wanted to get a feel for if that's something that's possible for you as a group.
I don't have, I don't have any standing meetings on that.
Is the third, just so we're clear on what's third Thursday is? So that's the 25th?
Um, no, of this month, I believe that is the fourth Thursday.
So the 18th?
18th is...
Right, it would have been later this week.
Yeah, it would have been later this week, precisely.
It's, it's just two days later, or three days later, there won't be the meeting.
So same week of the month, just a different day of the week, and this would also prevent weeks of the month where the third Monday and the fourth Thursday occur in the same week, which is challenging, Beverly could also maybe, I don't know, I don't know if she finds it challenging, I won't speak for Beverly, but it's...
No, no, it can be.
It can be challenging.
It can be.
Yeah, that's interesting, that does happen.
It does happen.
And if we're both, if both planning board and zoning board are Thursday, they can never meet on the same day.
They can never, yeah.
So I was in favor of it until you said it was to accommodate you, you would...
It's all about me.
No, I don't have an issue with it, as far as I'm concerned, I, I'm either in town or I'm not, so whether it's Monday or Thursday, it doesn't...
I'm fine.
No problem.
Yeah.
Anne seems to not have, what do you think, Anne?
Well, I'm just thinking my Thursdays are gonna be terrible from now on.
Oh, all of them are just...
Every Thursday or the third one? Get it all over in one day?
Well, I mean...
Mondays are gonna be awesome.
So half my Thursdays are gonna be terrible, and one of them's gonna be awful.
Oh, no. This one's gonna be awful?
Is there a conflict with my, my other half?
Um, there shouldn't be.
Your bigger half?
No, they need a Wednesday.
Yeah, they need a Wednesday.
Did you get that on camera?
Are they somewhere?
I think you said better half, I think you said better.
What did you put in there?
I played the fast.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We can't repeat that to anybody outside this committee.
No, very, very important, it stays here.
So I will put it together as a memo for next month, so that other members who were not able to be present tonight have the opportunity to voice an opinion on it, and then we could aim for a public hearing amending the rules of procedure for July.
Okay.
If that sounds doable.
In June, we'll set it up in July.
Okay, okay.
Cool.
I think that's good.
So the anticipated, if you had a public hearing in July, the anticipated August meeting would be that third Thursday, or would be later than that?
It probably would be the August meeting, but it might be September, depending on what applications we have on the pipeline this summer, because I don't want to mess up the application schedule.
Yeah, you want to have a kind of a break, okay.
Yeah, so it probably would change anticipated for the September meeting.
September, okay.
We move real fast to make change.
A couple months, just a minute. Anything else?
No, I think that's, that's a good idea, frankly, I get sick and tired of the whole, well, it's January, February, March, and we get a switch to the fourth or the second of the...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, then we won't have to do that.